All right. Spiritual cause control. Our flag is... Let's read this. Stand by. United States of America, we are the public police and my nation, united as one, with every justice law. Do we have the agenda from them? Motion to accept the...
No.
Second?
Second.
Was it second? And made second. Call. Call for a vote.
Aye.
All in favor say aye. You want public comments? Anybody has a public comment, may I ask you step up to the podium? Comments about that. You know, five. Time to jump up. Anybody have anything to add?
I just want to look at the like hundred three on the minute. But two on two ordnance. Did anybody else feel like the very last time you took on like you decided to pay fifty dollars for every official meeting? Like two of these people, did you come down for or on the same... Or even for every official meeting, had added, attended as a role mayor or councilwoman, paying thirty dollars for...
Oh, yep.
When I heard that, I thought, well, I probably... But fine, I'm okay with... And then, um, president by council mayor and his or her aides were shooting from nearby. But again, seven minutes. I think it's saying a lot of things. There's not much being excited to... Understood.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that can be changed.
Some non-regular official meeting. This is the first time I read it. I thought that council was really good.
I can see that, too.
Could you say every other official meeting?
Or all other?
Every non-regular official. This is a regular council meeting, right?
Right.
Every non-regular official. Non-regular council official. That's not regular council. Yeah, that's making me nervous. But I know you'll come up and tell us. I also think only two mics should work. Because my, ours aren't lit up because I can't see them though. But like, only two of them. Cool. Oh, yeah. Mine's red. If that one works. And then you charge...
Try that one. Yep, that one's working. Maybe you guys could share that one?
If I promise not to talk for us.
There you go.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt the meeting, but I just noticed. Since we're just talking about it.
All right, so the city minister will look at changing that verbiage on. Is there anything else in the consent agenda that needs to be discussed? None will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. I'm sorry. There we go. We have a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Never been in a commutative before. Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? With the changes to the verbiage for council pay.
Yep, I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing those, we'll move on. Section, we're going to go to D. Resolution number six twenty-five eighteen dash eighteen. Summary of ordinances. Two twenty-one.
That one's under consent agenda.
Oh, is it? Oh. All right. Number six. Reports and recommendations for city departments, consultant commissions, and committees. Number A and administrative.
Okay, so, um, number one is cleaning services for City Hall and the community center. Um, attached is a resolution six twenty-five eighteen seventeen. Um, so as of May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, um, the city has been, the city has been without a cleaning contractor for the community center and City Hall. Um, staff has been kind of picking up where they left off for the time being. Um, so we've solicited some proposals from other cleaning contractors. We did try to stay local, but we weren't... We did get one person that was interested, but they did not submit a proposal after we did a walkthrough. Um, so we reached out to Minnesota Services and integrity for, and they both came out, walked the site, and provided some quotes for us. We did do the same as our previous contract, which was two days for a full clean. And then during like the summer, when kids company is here for five days, full days, we'd have them kind of come in and do kind of just a quick tidy up. Um, so in your packet, we did get some quotes. Minnesota Services for the two days would be, which is about nine months of the year, is the five sixty-one, five hundred sixty-one dollars, seventeen cents. Summer cleaning with the five days was six hundred seventy-three, uh, six hundred seventy-three dollars, forty cents. Integrity came in at, for the two days, at six fifty-five. And then the summer cleaning was one thousand three hundred four. So, based on those quotes, um, we did look at, we did reach out to other communities that used both of these companies and did receive positive feedback. And so we're recommending approval of the proposal submitted by Minnesota Services. Um, that would be, uh, we, I drafted a resolution that would approve that and then allow me to then move forward, working on a contract for them. They did submit a proposal, but looking at it further with the attorney, we feel like an actual contract would be necessary instead of just signing their proposal. So, the resolution would allow us to move forward, setting up the proposal with those quotes that they provided to us. Or the contract.
These are monthly fees, all right?
These are monthly fees. So, our current, um, our current contractor, I mean, our previous contractor was about three seventy-five and with some added charges when we did have some extra events. But, um, like I said, we tried to find somebody local.
So, refresh my memory. How did it go? Did we have an ad in the paper or...?
We put stuff out on, um, yeah, what did we do? We reached out, um, I mean, we had several people that we contacted, um, through, and then I think we put something on our website and on social media. Um, I don't think we did anything on the paper.
Oh, had a paper or no?
I don't think we did a paper ad.
Where's the town coming from? You're supposed to feed what? You decided to watch your social media?
Well, and I know, um...
Well, you actually said it.
I like hired a contractor. We're hiring a contractor to use services. Not really, I don't know if it was an employee or just... In my mind, it was a...
I'm just so shocked that a local cleaning company didn't respond.
Well, we had, we talked to, we talked to Tom, and I mean, Tom even told us that they were doing it very cheap.
Yeah, that's true.
So, um, and he did, he did reach out to several people that he knows and we didn't get anybody that was interested, or they didn't have the time or couldn't commit to the weekends and, um...
So, what did these guys say about weddings, special events?
They can come in. They have, um, if you look at the proposal, um, there is some added fees on page, if you look on page forty-four, um, they have an hourly rate that they can come in and do extra stuff, or extra stuff. But, um, I think like, and then I think that the other one was a hundred for events, includes restocking, for extra cleanup events, it's a hundred dollars. Includes restocking, restrooms, cleaning hallways, entrances, et cetera.
What does it say that?
On, oh, this one says six, on page sixty-three, sorry. And then the other one on page forty-four.
Okay, so if they come in after a wedding, they're going to charge a hundred dollars?
The, yep, the, um, integrity would. And then... Extra cleaning.
I have the integrity. But we're looking at Minnesota Services. That's what I'm trying to...
I think they have an hourly rate of twenty-four ninety. It said extra cleaning upon request. Um... But we did, I mean, we did notify both companies that they would have to come in on weekends. And this was one of the things, too, when we were looking at these quotes, is that we would probably have to relook at our, maybe the fee schedule for events now, too, if that, if, you know, since cleaning is going up probably. I mean, it is significant compared to what we were, what we had.
And I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of extra charges passed on as we came into this.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's definitely the difference of, I mean, having Tom, they did a lot of work for free. We know that. Um, and so I know going to a, somebody who's not local, who doesn't have that relationship with the city, definitely we have to keep an eye on their, on the invoices.
Is this a month-to-month contract?
Well, we haven't set the contract yet.
Yeah, there's contracts.
But what they're proposing is monthly. But we would, we can set a...
What they're proposing is what, sorry?
Is monthly fees. We haven't...
Is it a month-to-month?
Yep.
We can cancel the contract with a month notice or...
Uh, we're going to, and I can bring that contract back to you. The attorney's going to help me draft a contract. Uh, that's what the resolution kind of outlines, that we're going to move ahead with the contract. And we can, we can, if we want it to be monthly, we can do that. We can put a stipulation in there that allows us to do that. Um, there, these are just the proposals, and so we wanted to kind of get moving on this quicker, and so with that, we proposed that we would appoint a company tonight and then allow it, that would allow us to move forward with drafting a contract per guidelines.
If that contract is not acceptable, then you say so. It's an all employees.
Well, the con, I mean, I guess that would be, um, I mean, if you, if you would feel more comfortable for me bringing the contract to you for approval, that's fine. Otherwise, you can approve the resolution that would allow me and the attorney to set up an appropriate contract, um, just to get things moving a little quicker. But we can, I mean, I can always bring it back to the July ninth meeting, otherwise.
Why don't they come to me to approve the contract? And I'd like to see you a month to month so that they can get out of it in twenty weeks.
Yep, that's fine. We can, we can wait.
So, who's doing it now?
What?
Still just you guys?
Yep.
Okay, I'm running a big issue company arising community festival. All they need to clean up afterwards. And I brought your hat and that band up here.
I mean, they do. I think for scrubber and, I mean, floors need to be scrubbed and bathrooms stuff down. And it's a big cleaning.
That's a thing, huh? Does they have it?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And we have an event on Sunday.
I'm sorry. Everybody, get up in the morning.
Well, can, could we hire them for some one-off things right now while we...
I don't, I don't know. I don't know if they would be willing to just do...
Contract?
I'd say let's just move forward, let's choose a company and move forward and work on a contract that we can have approved in two weeks.
They're not going to start cleaning the whole contract in two weeks, so... Or we shouldn't let them anyway.
I agree. I think we should, I mean, it's just hold this until we have a, we have a contract brought to us and hired at that point.
Well, was something wrong with the contract that we had with Coniston? Can you just read that and...
Um, hm?
Yeah, I think they do. I think they do.
Since we had to renew it.
And that's probably what's wrong there, where we were staying.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I just, when I, I mean, I can look at that contract a little bit more. I did, I think just because they're, I don't know, it, because this is an actual company, I don't know if it would just need more detail than theirs did, but, um...
So, what's the meeting in two weeks?
Yep.
July fourteen, if you want. Nothing before that major? Sunday, you said?
Um...
Oh, okay.
If we were to approve over time, we can just have our public works people do that, to clean it? If we have, if we have to at worst, or...
The Rising Community Festival, too. I'm sure we can get with them, they can help all of us do whatever. And again, there's the same for people that have to do everything else, but at least, you know, I'm pretty sure they'll understand and, you know, try to pitch in a little bit more.
It might be the outdoor, but it might...
Oh, it's outdoors, it's really hot.
And it might, and it might have it either for, if you're the ring. I have to double check that.
I bet you that's right there. They still have it over here on...
All right. Well, we'll table this until the city administrator is able to come up with a contract. So, we'll move on to six A two, lion signs.
Okay, so, um, just little information on page sixty-two. The Lion, the Lions Club has requested to place signs on the city of mayor population signs that are placed at the entrances of the city. Minda has approved the installation of the signs if the following criteria, criteria are met, that the addition of the sign would not exceed three extra signs under the population sign, that the sign is thirty inches by twenty-four inches or less in size, and that it's placed on the right post. Um, so just before they install the sign, we just felt that, myself and Mike felt that we should ask the city council for approval just to get the signs put up. So, we're just asking for the council's approval to put the Lions Club signs up, on those signs.
They got Minda approval already?
Yep.
That is not...
Mm-hmm. I do.
Okay, we'll look for a motion to approve the addition of the, of the mayor lion signs to the welcome, or the city of mayor signs.
Just the population signs, right? It's not going on the city of mayor signs?
No, the city, yeah, okay. The highway signs.
Population signs.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second. Any further discussion? Who's, who's paying for those signs? Is it Lions Club? Paying for that themselves? Okay. And I'm assuming they're within our sign ordinance and no problems there with it?
I don't, yeah, I don't think so. Yep, I think those should be fine.
Okay. I think just in the future, if, um, for signs like that, that are, you know, coming up for a civic organization, I think as long as they're personally within the sign policy, that, you know, the city administrator and the public works director or supervisor would just make that decision and just put them up if a company needs to come up here. It's only my two cents on that.
My two cents is what happens if they just bang, but...
Well, then they would...
Take down the signs.
Then they would come down.
Scrum.
Okay, all right.
Okay, all in favor of, all in favor of putting up those signs, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Hearing that, motion passed. Brings us to six B one, ice rink and archery range locations in Old Schoolhouse Park.
Okay, so, um, in front of you today is, um, some information coming from the park commission. Um, they, they've spent a few meetings reviewing and determining locations, potential locations for the ice rink and archery range. Um, the park commission is recommending to council that both amenities be located at Old Schoolhouse Park. There's a picture on page sixty-five, um, of where the proposed archery range would be and then where the ice skating rink would be. I don't know if I can show that on here. Um, so, we, the park commission, um, has budgeted, has dedicated about ten thousand to each project, um, and the park commission would like to proceed with the location determination so that, um, staff can move forward with getting hard costs on what it would cost to grade the ice rink location. And then also, um, there's some work that would need to be done for the archery range, which would be the creation of like a berm on the north side and just some other, uh, some other, um, things that would need to be adjusted on that location as well. Um, so, the park commission recommended approval of these locations to the council tonight.
I have one question.
Yeah, there you go.
Starting with skating, because that's the symbol, the symbol. Like, tell me about it. Is it regulation size? Does it have the size like we, is it like we planned the first one?
All, it's just like what the crew has. So, we're just going to grade the land so it's flat and so it's paper, so the middle, and we're going to have a green pile in it. So, when it's done, we can actually drink water out of it and not have to be pool water.
Are you going to put liner in there?
We're going to try without the liner. Most cities do it without a liner.
Just like if the ground is frozen, so...
You just, yep, you layer it and you kind of work it a little bit. And then you should do it and keep it next. But we're not going to do boards for now. We're just going to grade it, but we're sure going to grade it. So, if we do ever want to put boards up, we can. And it'll be easier for us. So, yeah, this is just, because right now it's paper, it's probably a good foot and a half to the east. So, we're just kind of, kind of, kind of dig it down and square it so it's nice and even and it's flooding and everything, a little less easier. So, I forget what a regulation type is going to look like for the, uh, for God, but I forget the exact size. But the box is a little, quite a bit larger than what it's actually given.
Hard.
So, and then also, we're going to burn the warming house back, get that put in a position out there as well. Not sure which side yet. Run power and electric to it from the concession stands, to get power and electric down there. So, that should be fairly, I mean, it'll be, it'll be a cost, but not an extraordinary cost. And also, uh, some additional lighting, probably more, or less.
Around the rink?
Around the rink, correct.
How were you using to flood it and keep it maintained?
There's hydrants down there as well.
So, you don't have to drive anything down there to...
We don't, but we do have watering tanks and stuff, and we have to bring up a little thing behind the motor, put some water down there.
Well, that's super exciting, because I know a lot of people use it.
Yep. And it's always, it's always been brought up in like November.
Could you get that in?
This is the time to kind of do it if we're going to do it, so...
And so, I think this might have been engineered before.
We have everything to like boards and everything.
You have all that?
We have all that, yeah. So, this is just a fraction of it. I mean, we, I think we went out both when I first started, I think we went out both on blacktop boards and lights and...
All different things.
All different, yep.
But I'm pretty sure Martini looked at it and made, I don't know if he did a grading. I thought...
I don't know if he did a grading.
Oh, he did.
I'll look, but it's, we...
It's not a preliminary.
Right. It's a, it's a pretty cut, dry, simple project, so I don't even think like excavating it will be that bad. And then if we're activating that at the same time, I don't know, we'll talk about archery. But that dirt can be then just moved down and burned with archery. That's kind of the same time. So, we'll build, that would save some money in taking the ice gear. But if we got to haul it out, we got to haul it out. We're building more progress.
Okay, so, that was all I had on the skating rink.
I didn't have anything. I was just excited about it.
Have a nice, have a nice nap up here now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, the archery range, I remember that we have spent some time like, kind of developing these parks or looking at them for the future. Is there, is there still plans for a road or a trail right there to the north, behind the ballpark?
That was a spooky apartment. And then there was plans, but it didn't look like, I found plans, and it looked like before the boat story was... Or a threat.
Okay, but you see that lot line there? There was, at one point, a road was talked about going there, maybe parking, but then they talked about putting a trail behind that ball field to connect into Old Schoolhouse.
And road was, or like around the backside of the ballpark, ball field?
Yeah, yeah.
I guess I have a tune in, like, art and board.
Right. I'm just wondering if...
We could probably board it, it worked.
So, I'm kind of, I don't know where, how the archery range, like, a couple weeks ago was the first time I've ever heard that we were thinking about doing that. I have so many reservations about having an archery range in a park where there's a lot of other traffic and kids and so many other things going on. And I know that we're probably going to build it to be as safe as it can, but I have so many reservations. So, first of all, has anybody looked into the insurance on that? I just, I don't know.
The city's insurance policy covers it.
Currently does?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know.
That was our first question, too. Where did, where did this come, come up? Did residents come and start asking for it? Residents came in a couple months ago and, uh, there's, I guess, semi-professional kind of archery guy came in to the city council and proposed it, and then...
To the council?
To the park board. Um, so that was several months ago, so in the meantime, the park board has done a lot of research on cost and insurance and ordinances and all that, and, um, also contact with other cities that would have, that have archery ranges.
What other cities have?
I'm just curious, do you remember?
There's, um, the city of Carver.
Yep, Carver has one.
Carver's down in that big park, down by the river, suburbs.
And then Three Rivers District. And Carver Park has one.
Hudson's.
Hudson's, yeah, so...
Are they manned at all?
No.
Just going there and shoot them.
And the type of targets that would be used are, it's not hay, it's not hay, so arrows can't go through it. They're pretty sturdy industrial, very thick foam.
I'm not worried about arrows going through a target. I know what happens when you shoot arrows. They don't go where, uh... They don't go where a kid or a young people aim. I mean, they're here, they're off to the side, they're, it just, I'm not bold on this yet.
And you can put, you know, no one under the age of, you know, anyone under the age of fifteen has to be. Well, then that's their, you know, shoot at your own risk kind of thing.
It's our fault, it's our problem if young kids go in there or someone, you know, takes out the bow and arrow. They're bored in the summer and, you know, it just.
You're right, keep a little drawing, right? Just a little flag a little bit.
Sure.
It's kinda what they're thinking right now. Here's the berm, and we build it, this is kind of burned up right here already. Main concern was, I think the park board really got it right here along the, uh, other new apartment.
Yeah.
So, um, they're kind of, uh, planned, there'd be three targets, could be four, I mean, I just kind of drew the, this is, this is actually quite large compared to what I think it would be. But, uh, some, just some, some bunkers kind of going along the edges, kind of just out of, kind of paralogoing down as you're looking at it, and then the target would be right here. And then you talked about a focal line, you have the pine trees or the trees, kind of to keep it contained as much as possible and that's true for this side, for the bolt storage area where not much parking or anything. Very much activity is basically, but, yeah, safety was definitely on their minds when they're thinking about it, so. But that's kind of currently kind of what they're.
So, that's the only barrier there? They're not walking inside anything with walls or?
Right, yeah, and that, yeah, that's kind of.
And most archery ranges are not set up that way anyway.
With walls?
No, you have enough.
Well, some have like a netting, they have a kind of.
But not for each individual range, it's for the whole.
For like the whole thing.
Yeah.
So, it's three rivers, that's like, and it kind of the county parks, right? So, they have just one range and one park?
Yes, there's actually five different, I think it's five different.
Those five.
Yeah.
And.
Thank you.
And then Carver Park has one down by the river.
Yeah, yeah.
Does Carver have any, they're not Carver Parks, but Carver.
Yeah, I don't think there's any protection at all, that's just in the field kind of, you know, down by the river.
You've heard of?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Yeah.
Up on all two twelve in that area, I think.
Right, and I know Hudson has one. Buster Curry has one outside of town.
Are they in a major park like ours, though? That's, that, I mean, that's my only concern, too, is.
Hudson's.
Okay.
It's down by the river.
Well, and so it's three rivers, I mean, you've got that running trail and you've got the camping right there and.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I mean, it's literally right next to the camping.
City park board did look at all the parks and kind of, did land and, like, the compo site just kind of out of the way, kind of, to keep this possibly get, take off, get the water.
What's wrong with the compo site?
I guess, probably.
I think if you have to drive to get there, you're more likely to go with the parents.
Sure. Yeah.
We didn't talk.
We didn't talk.
No, we didn't.
We talked about that site. The only other site.
The only other site that we discussed was between the Dakota Trail and the Hidden Creek neighborhood, that empty spatial land.
In middle, Carver, uh, yeah, there's a spot, no, Carver.
Yeah, that.
I discussed it.
Yeah, we discussed that.
But, uh, the real, or Carver County on that.
Was it?
Yeah.
I mean, that was the only other place that.
There's still a budding neighborhood on one side and they have the road on the other. I don't know if it's any better than there.
I mean, my concern.
Isn't there like a set of trees, is that where you're talking?
Yeah.
My concern is what if you have someone who's not very familiar, like, oh, we can go shoot, but then they get cra- they decide, well, let's maybe not shoot in that direction. And they turn around and shoot in other directions than what they're supposed to. You know, they're talking about.
Kids, kids running in there to get their arrow and someone doesn't know it. More than one person shooting, you know, at a time and someone runs down to get their arrow. Archery is great, but when I learned archery, there was like gun safety. It was like we had rules and we were trained and we followed the rules. And I just, it, it's not gonna, it's a.
I feel like this might, I don't like this location.
This location.
I like if the compo site actually was like, huh, that actually, I mean, no, but like a place that, well, no, a place that isn't, that's open, that's not by a park or residential.
I agree.
That.
And from my point of view, it's where I'm at, where I'm at.
What, the feet down here?
We don't really count the cover.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and we don't.
Unless that you ever do build a trail back here, or there were supposed to be batting cages down here. I mean, if the ball parks ever do get developed, it just, there's gonna be more traffic down here.
I, I don't, I don't like where the location is. And I would need to know a lot more information about archery. I know you guys have done a lot of legwork, but actually like coming and presenting it, like having the park board presenting and showing us pictures of other ones and what they do, what our other cities do, and really, I, I think it's the safety thing. I think it's a cool concept if people have come to the park board wanting this. I just, not just, uh, here's where I think we should put it, without any understanding of what, I don't even, I've never seen an archery range, so I don't know, even know what it looks like or. So, I would need way more information for me to even consider, let alone pick a location.
And then can people go in there with their hunting arrows, bows?
We would have changed the ordinance, because right now the ordinance does not allow that because it's a dangerous weapon, you can't discharge those in the city. Um, so, the ordinance for the crossbows would need to be changed.
And that was my other issue. So, if we start changing that, are we gonna have to start changing it for BB guns and, you know, other kinds of?
Well, the, the, one we were thinking is we would just, it would be just this location.
Yeah.
So, you would write the ordinance. Hmm?
And then that's the other thing, will people start bringing their BB guns up there? Have neighbors.
Well, they shouldn't, it's an archery range.
They shouldn't, yeah.
I know.
I, I, I know, but I, I get where you're coming from, but we can't, I, I, you know, there's so many what ifs and there's a what if to every situation that we have. And there's always gonna be that rogue person and that rogue teenager that's just gonna do whatever the heck they wanna do and forget, forget what any sign says, forget what any common sense says. You know, and we can't eliminate an amenity just because of the possibility that we're gonna have a rogue kid who wants to disrespect authority.
This amenity also is kind of, um, exclusive to a very small group of people where I kind of think if money's gonna be spent, it should be done on things like the ball field so that we can get a bigger group of. I mean, we got kids that drive to, groups that drive to New Germany to play ball, 'cause they can't, they can't play here. So, I, I just think if it's a chunk of money that's being spent, I'd like to see it more dispersed.
It's amazing how many people are actually interested in this archery range and not just recreational people, but the hunters are very interested in having it open so they can like sight in their.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's not a small group, it's quite, it's surprisingly a large group, I was not expecting it.
Did archery ever come up on, an archery range ever come up on our survey, or?
It's been so many years since we've done surveys, I don't remember.
Yeah.
So, we were approaching.
Be approached by, yeah.
Yeah.
Then all of a sudden, everyone's like, oh, that's a great idea.
This is a fun thing to do.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not a hundred percent against it, I just want, I just need more, I guess, assurance. I mean, I know you guys did a lot of legwork and did that, but I'd like to see that legwork, I'd like it to be more presented. I'd like to see actual pictures of what it, we would be, it looking like, what are the safety barriers?
I did.
No. But I'd like to see like actual like examples.
But the approval tonight is just for the location, not for the moving. We're not, yeah. So, it's just the location is what we're talking about tonight.
We're just trying just to start the, the topic or the conversation.
But I, I, okay.
Okay, well, let's table this with direction to the park board to.
Well, we can do the ice rink.
Oh, oh, yeah, right.
I wanna get going on it.
Good point, okay.
We've done it here.
All right. So, we have a motion to approve the location for the ice rink in Old School House Park.
I'll make, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Go ahead, you price it, it's all centers, get everything where they want to go.
Approving the location and then moving ahead was trying to figure out how much it's really gonna cost.
Yep, yep, yep.
Without boards?
Without boards, correct.
And we can't use what we had before, the prices that we had before? Oh, no, we were gonna tar it.
We were gonna tar it, yeah, lake is free and, yeah.
But that'd be nice.
Yeah, it would be.
Something to move forward with.
We'll do a part of it.
Yeah, okay, so, the motion is to approve the location for the ice rink and to research pricing to make that area suitable for the ice rink. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Hearing none, most passes. And on the second issue on that for the archery range, we're gonna table that and with direction to the park board to think about other locations for, for their use of that option. Bring us to.
Can we just add like more safety stuff and more of like a presentation?
More detail.
More detail.
Like, and what it looks like, like example pictures.
And maybe looking at the compo, right?
That brings us to six B two, West Ridge Park Playground Equipment.
Okay, so, um, in front of you is some information on the West Ridge Park amenities that the park commission has been working on. Um, just a little information, the capital improvement budget for two thousand eighteen is seventy thousand. The park board in their CAP wanted to focus on West Ridge Park amenities, um, as part of their capital improvement. We haven't spent anything on projects yet this year. Um, in the packet, there is a quote, um, from Flagship for the West Ridge play equipment that includes five different amenities, um, or different equipment pieces. Um, it was quoted at sixty-six thousand three hundred fifty-one. They did give us a discount of twenty-five thousand five hundred ninety-eight to bring it down to forty thousand seven hundred fifty-three. Um, the discount, they essentially gave us the, um, I think the sway fund and installation, let me just double check for free. Um, we, uh, due to the upcoming shortage of staff and public works, we, we, with that discount, we were recommending that Flagship do the installation of all of them this year. Um, so included is, is the pricing document that shows the outline of, um, the installation costs and the equipment costs, and then it also shows where they will be located. And then it also has some pictures as well of the items that we chose, um, to put in the park this year. Uh, not all of the items in that packet are, are things that we're doing, but, um, I think the cozy dome and.
Oh, wait, the what?
Sway fund. There's some pictures of the, um, the i- the equipment in the packet as well.
But not all of them are going in?
Not, um, okay, so there's like five, I think there's like some, there's five different equipments. So, there's the, I think there's some like sensory wall stuff, like, that, um, hold on. I don't know if all of those will go in, but, um.
Okay, wait, but this is our park, right? This is, this is what we have in the center, no?
The, um, so if you look at this picture up here, everything in green is what we have. I don't think you can see it up there. Um, so, everything that has a label on it would be the new stuff. So, this, the sway fund, the cozy dome, the sensory wall, hemisphere climber and the we saw. Um, and then I think we have something that has to still be installed, is that right, Kyle?
Yeah.
Omnispin.
Yeah, like, I don't recall that one.
Oh, yeah, okay, so we have it, but it's not in.
Right.
So, now we're looking at putting in the sway fund.
Yep.
And we saw.
Top one.
And what, the cozy dome?
Cozy dome.
But not the sensory wall?
No, I think, hold on. We, yeah, we are having the sensory wall and cascade climber go in as well.
Mm-hmm.
When I, when the, when I, sorry, when I said the pictures, I wasn't sure if all of those sensory wall items would be installed, but.
And cascade climber and sensory wall.
It's the goal of the park board to have this playground be an all-inclusive playground because there is not one in Carver County. I'm, uh, this is exciting.
It is, and that begs the question, where are people from other towns in the park when they come to this main street, all-inclusive park?
And we've got the parking lot all figured out, we just need to get it put in.
Is it still going down where they had it originally, up right off the alley? So, maybe that's next year's project?
Hopefully.
And when you say the capital improvement budget, is that, what, are you, do you mean that's their budget?
Seventy thousand, so they, they did, I, I believe, fifty thousand for the amenities for the park. And then.
For just this park?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep, for this year. So, it will come in, their quote, and I think we did relay that to Flagship that we were only looking to spend fifty, and so he did, he was able to bring it down to forty thousand seven hundred fifty-three.
Oh, cool.
It was part of their, the capital, I think, um, if I can remember, it was fifty for the park and then ice skating rink and.
And the, uh, curbing.
Yep, so we did, we did like seven thousand for curbing, ten thousand for ice rink, and then fifty thousand for the.
Well, so that was part of your budget. So, nothing's coming out of the two-twenty?
No.
It's already?
This is already budgeted.
Bunch of four items.
Yep.
Look for a motion to approve the purchase of playground equipment for West Ridge Park in the amount of forty thousand seven fifty-three, and that includes installation.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, aye, opposed, say nay. Hearing none, most passes.
Well, I thought you said name. Um, so, I should've asked this before, but now does that need to be made bigger? Is it all, we made it big enough the first step, okay, that's why not.
I was thinking the same thing.
What you call it? Mulch and stuff?
I actually thought it was more mulch, 'cause I knew it would settle after we did all the work last year. So, I, I actually did all the mulch last week, so, I got that up here.
Awesome.
All right, bring this to number seven, city council reports, anybody? attended any meetings or any other information they want to share with council and public? Hearing none, move on to any other business? New business, any other business? Upcoming meetings and events, just, uh, it's like June twenty-seventh, Mendat Open House. Is that up, is that up here or where is that gonna be located?
Yep, it'll be here at City Hall.
Regular city council meetings, okay.
And it'll be at six thirty.
Yeah. Wednesday, so it's Wednesday, June twenty-seventh at six thirty?
Yep.
Six thirty to when?
Eight.
And is that on any?
I put it on Facebook. I thought I had included it in your guys' weekly update as well.
Yeah, yeah, you did.
Okay, yep, it's on Facebook, it, and, um, Mendat supposedly sent out a card to everybody.
When did you get yours?
I don't see one.
I did not get one.
I did not get one.
Didn't get one.
Did not get one.
They left.
All right, look for a motion to, during the city council meeting.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No opposed, most passes.